It's still six fifty nine on my one, I'm just waiting for it to tip over to seven. It's gone seven on my watch as well, so we'll say it's seven o'clock, so we'll start. So, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's planning committee. For those who don't know me, my name's David Watts, I'm the Chair of the committee. Sat next to me is Ryan Dawson, who's the Head of Planning at the council. And on these first two rows of tables around are the members of the committee who will take the decisions tonight. The process for each application is pretty much the same, that I will ask Mr Dawson to[440.06][440.06]introduce the application. There is a recommendation attached to each application, either to approve or refuse permission. I will move that and councillor McGrath, who is the Deputy Chair of this committee, will second it. Before we do that though, for two of the applications, we do have public speakers. And so for those, I would ask the people who are speaking to take the seat where councillor McGrath, councillor McCrae, I beg your pardon, is currently sat, put my teeth in, currently sat, who is the gentleman in the red jacket. And there's a microphone there, and if you are a public speaker, you've got three minutes. I'll give you a prompt about thirty seconds before the end, so that you know it's time to be starting to think about winding up. Once we've moved the recommendation, that simply opens matters for debate, it doesn't necessarily mean that we agree with it or that we disagree with it, it's simply the way it opens up the debate. And so the members of the committee will then speak. And the procedure that we followed for many years here is I will invite people to speak as often as they wish on an item. Obviously, I do ask members to try and be succinct as far as possible in what they say. If anybody can't hear, please say so, and I'll make sure that people speak up, and I'll ask members to remember to switch your microphones on when you speak. We will then, at the end of the debate on each item, we will vote on it. Voting is normally just by a show of hands. If anyone wants a recorded vote, we can do that, but normally it's just done by a show of hands, and it's a straight majority wins. So there's normally thirteen members on this committee, so seven-six is the figures. I don't think everyone's quite here today. But it's just done by a straight majority. If it's a tie, I have a casting vote as Chair. Okay, so with those introductions, we'll then move on to the agenda. There's a couple of items, or four items, to go through before we have the specific applications. Firstly, apologies for absence. I think councillor Hallam.
Apologies from councillor David Grindel, I'm substituting for him.
Thank you very much. I've been sent apologies from councillor Margaret Handley as well, she's not very well. Any others? No, from Mellen, right, thank you very much, yes, so from councillor Idulovic. Item two, any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Item three, minutes of the last meeting. These are pages five to sixteen of the application, of the agenda. I'll move these as a true and correct record.
I'll second that Chair.
Any corrections or alterations that are needed? If not, can I see all those in favour? Thank you very much, that is carried, and I shall sign these as we go through. Item four is notification of lobbying. Lobbying is when somebody speaks to us about an application before the meeting, perfectly fine and proper to do that, but we do want everything to be done above board, and so we do ask members to declare if they've been lobbied, and in fact, there's a form that we fill into that effect, but I would ask people as well, if you've been lobbied, just to mention that when you first speak on an item. It doesn't affect the ability of members to speak or to vote on any item, but we do want it to be clear what has been said. Okay, so with those four, we then turn to the specific applications. The first one is number five point one, which is Field Farm, Ilkiston Road in Stapleford. This is a variation of condition, planning reference twenty zero zero one one six, which is one that's already been granted. And this is a variation by changing the layout and changing some of the house types. So, Mr Dawson, would like to introduce this.
Thank you Chair. Yes, whilst there's a fairly long description, based on previous hybrid application, essentially its application relates to updating the house types and admitting a few parts of the layout that have been previously agreed. This is largely due to the fact that the site has been sold from Westman Homes to Pebble Homes. Principle's absolutely fine, it's been the local plan for several years, and those who've been on the planning committee for several years will be aware of some of the history of this. There's no change in the numbers, and there's no changes to the outline elements at all. The layout changes, shown in submitted plans and early in the report, are moving some of the houses from more courtyard-style parking arrangement to one where there's more practical front parking, which we're happy with in terms of future occupiers and amenity perspective. Some of the affordable houses have been repositioned, we're content with suggested changes, as are the council's housing department. The house type changes, which are in page twenty-five of the report, we consider to be acceptable and actually show better design overall than was previously approved. The minor layout changes and updated house types and the relationship with phase one are also all considered to be acceptable, we can see no issues in this regard. Section one of six is not being altered, all details will be carried across and a suitable section one of six addendum or linking documents, call it what you will, will be drawn to reflect this. We're very happy with suggested changes and recommend approval. With regard to late items, and I'll say this with apologies to everybody, whilst none of the changes here relate to the outlined scheme, we need to recreate a decision notice where all the relevant conditions are covered. And as phase one has been built out, and details relating to many of the other conditions to other phases have already been discharged, this is quite tricky. Therefore, with close working with the planning officer and the planning agents, we've just about got it right, but apologies for the suggested changes, if it's not clear, please let me know. But basically, we're tweaking the wording of a couple of conditions, and we need to insert a couple of extra conditions to make sure all the issues are covered, and to make sure that all the previous elements that have been discharged as part of the other schemes are still carried across where relevance. Very happy, recommend approval, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Richard McCrae is the Ward councillor for this ward, which is Stapleford North. Councillor McCrae would like to speak on it, so Richard, I will hand over to you, thank you very much.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everybody as well. All right, excuse me. I'm speaking this evening as one of the Stapleford North Ward councillors, I've spoken at great length about this application, which has been determined tonight with my fellow councillor Jang Gould. We have serious concerns regarding the social and affordable element of the application. Westmans had mixed this element of housing around the phase two of the site, and this had been approved by Broxton Borough Council previously. However, the new company has ownership of the development, and their plan is to segregate the social and affordable housing into one specific corner. This will create a us-and-them community, and one could even go as far as suggesting that it creates a ghetto. Furthermore, if you examine phase one of the development, the social and affordable element was all pushed into one corner of the site and basically fenced off from the rest of the development. This is surprisingly, sorry, this not surprisingly is already causing issues in the area. But before anyone says I'm only raising these concerns because the opposite my house, this is not the case, I get on well with my new neighbours, and it's very easy to just walk across the road and help and support them as and when needed. I hope that this evening, that we can object, or at least abstain, and demand that the social and affordable housing is put back to how it was originally intended and integrated within the mix. After all, aren't we supposed to love thy neighbour, instead of alienating people by sticking them in a corner? I would once again like to raise concerns about the playpark area that is planned, this could be divisive, as we already have playparks on hand within the area. Instead, I would like to have seen the money used to improve what's already in place, encouraging new residents to enjoy and integrate. If however the plans for the new play area are to go ahead, I would like to see items installed with a thought for youngsters with disabilities, maybe even a swing that could be adopted for the use of a wheelchair user, that's just a thought. I'm also raising concerns about the so-called need to build shops and units that can be used for a variety of businesses, as laid out in the planning application. We do not need more businesses, we need to support what we already have in the area. When phase one was submitted, we were told there was plenty of shops nearby, and we sadly saw the Jaguar pub demolished to make way for the much-needed shops, as we were told at the time. We have shop, we have these shops, shops on Pasty Road, shops at Montrose Court, and we have two post offices within walking distance of Field Farm Development, Stapleford Town Centre is close enough to walk or to drive if need be, and there are two nearby buses that can be used to get to the town centre. Surely we should be encouraging people to use the businesses we already have, especially following the difficult times I've had for the past two years nearly. I'd also like to raise concerns about the start time on the site, as I know they have been on-site from seven fifteen in the morning, causing a disturbance to the resident's residence. They shouldn't be on there till eight o'clock if I'm correct. And can we also insist that some wheel washers are on-site for all vehicles leaving the site? And can we insist that when lorries leave the site, they cover the tops before leaving and not after leaving? This will help stop the amount of soil dropped on to Ilkiston Road. I would also like to raise concerns about the blocked drains along Ilkiston Road, as I've never seen the road flood like it currently does, and I've lived round there for a very long time. This appears to have gotten worse since the road sweeper keeps working up and down Ilkiston Road after the lorries for soil leave the site. Whilst it is appreciated the roads are swept, could it be that he's actually sweeping the soil into the drains causing the blocked drains, which could result in the recent flooding on Ilkiston Road? And lastly, I would like to raise concerns about the hedge rowing trees along Ilkiston Road. Now, you will no doubt be told this evening, they are not part of the development being discussed this evening, but I feel they're very much part of the bigger picture, and most definitely part of the Field Farm development in one way or another. The trees are not blocking the proposed new road, and as that is further along the road from where the trees are, again, the trees do not block the view from coming into or off the road. There is also plenty of room for a proposed cycle path without cutting the trees down. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening, and I would also like to thank my fellow councillor Jang Gould, who's raised these same concerns as I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, and Richard, because you've spoken as the ward member, the rules do allow you a right to reply at the end as well, should you wish to take that up.
I'm not being rude, but I've got to shoot off now because I've got to be somewhere else, so I'm sorry I can't stop for the rest of me to, but thank you again.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Okay, well, the recommendation is to approve planning permission, and so I shall move the recommendation.
I'll second that Chair.
Thank you very much, and I'll now open this up for debate, any comments, questions or views anyone wishes to express. Councillor Hallam.
Thanks Chair. Don't want to sound like I'm repeating things that my friend Richard McCrae has said, but I'd like to supplement some of them. The clumping of the social housing is a concern, I know that recently other large developments, we've worked quite diligently to make sure that different types of housing is well-integrated and creates a cohesive and holistic community. This is a backward step, I would say that the previous plans didn't go far enough, but were probably sufficient. This is definitely a retrograde step, and I'd prefer to see this deferred, for the developer to go away and review what they can do and make it better. Overall, I support the application. The concern I also share with my friend Richard McCrae is the trees, the tree positioning, and this is best illustrated on page forty-seven of the application, where you can see quite a clear drawing of where the new trees are going to go on one side of the red line, and where the old trees are, the existing mature ones on Ilkiston Road. And they're clumped together. I would like to see, if it were at all possible, the developers move the new trees to somewhere where they can actually supplement the existing ones, rather than be in the northern shadow of the existing trees on Ilkiston Road. I think that would be a lot better in terms of wildlife corridor, that'd be a lot better in terms of noise blocking and from the road, and creating a much greener, more welcoming space for everybody, existing residents and new residents. So I would really, really like to see that. There's ample room on that southern stretch of the boundary for the new trees to be placed sort of equidistantly along and actually balance everything up, rather than be planted in the shadow of the existing ones. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Proposing to plant a set of new trees directly to the north of the existing ones seems to be very odd, given that they would be constantly in shadow. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, I agree with the suggestion that we should defer it for a number of reasons. Totally agree with the positioning of the affordable housing element, and I don't think any of us, we've said this so many times at this committee, I don't think any of us want to see segregation in that way, for a whole load of reasons. So I think this ought to go back with a request that that be improved. I listened to the argument about the trees, and I think that's a valid one as well. There's a, one of the conditions, I forget where it is, talks about replacing trees that are removed, if you can't avoid removing those trees. I think it ought to be strengthened to say, replacing them with mature trees wherever possible. And I'd really suggest, I mean, if I need to formally propose that it's deferred, I'll do that now. And if colleagues agree, I think rather than discussing this twice over, we might be better off just moving on and getting on with deferring it, Chairman.
Yeah, I'm very happy to second that, for the same reasons that all of those that have been said. I can see councillor Owen is indicated to speak, as is... Councillor Owen first. But councillor Owen, and I will ask Mr Dawson to come in before we take a vote on that.
Yes, Chairman, whilst we're talking to the developer, one thing that's concerned me looking at the drawings and the diagrams, is just how bland and boring and unimaginative the designs of the houses are. I know that they will be their standard models, but right at the very beginning, once it had been decided that this land at Field Farm should be developed, we wanted, and we tried hard, to get it to be a showcase development, particularly a showcase development in terms of design. And originally, we rejected the initial application on the grounds that what was proposed then was, as I just said, unimaginative and boring. We lost that appeal unfortunately, we went to appeal and we lost, and so they came in with these awful designs. I really would have hoped that we could have got something better than what is proposed now. We see these all over the borough, the new housing developments, they're so bland, so uninteresting. I would have thought this was an ideal opportunity for a developer to actually make a positive statement in terms of design, and I find it particularly disappointing that they have decided at this stage that they don't want to do so. So I would hope that message could also be taken back, we want to see something that's a little more inspiring.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now, there was lots of finger pointing going on, is councillor McGrath next?
Can you hear me now? Yeah, as councillor McCrae said, the use of the open spaces concerns me as well, I'm not an expert on designing everything, obviously the trees. But the use of the open spaces around that area as well, is, unless some of us know the area, I'm sure councillor Pringle and Lydia do, is we've got pit lane at the top there, we've got a football field, we've got a lovely plateau that can be used for numerous things, and the links between the Nottingham and Trow canal and all that, the things that I think we need to be looking at as well to improve the actual, what's that word, pull of the area, because Trow hasn't really got anything, football fields, cricket fields or anything, so I think we need to be looking at how we can enhance that as well as part of the development. But I'd prefer if we went back and deferred that as well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pringle.
Thank you Chair. Can we just go look at, we're going to defer it, I guess that's what's going to happen this evening. Can we go back to the recommendations, and specifically recommendation number eleven, which talks about flooding or mitigating flooding? You probably know, I've mentioned it before, but a lot of the residents that live in Trow Park Estate didn't actually suffer from flooding, apart from a little bit from Boundry Brook, but we didn't end up with houses being vacated for up to a year until the initial development started and was indeed completed on Field Farm. So I would just like, if we are going to defer it, to go back to this recommendation eleven, and this is a strange expression to use, but it's quite relevant I guess, make section, recommendation eleven watertight, so that basically what it doesn't do is it doesn't sort of worsen what we're originally suffering. I mean, for me, as a councillor, parish councillor in Trow, and a ward councillor for Awesworth Castle in Trow, to see people not being able to live in their houses for a year since nineteen twenty nineteen, and also still waiting almost two years now for the mitigation that's going to be put in place to stop the houses from being flooded again, and it still hasn't happened. And every time there's a heavy rainfall, I get emails and phone calls from the residents because they're worried about the houses flooding. So really, I would ask that we need to make sure this recommendation here, everything in it is absolutely watertight, because the residents deserve it, they don't deserve to have what's happening to them at the moment. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you Chair, it's quite a few things actually. We, I think we need to remember as a planning committee, the existing permission's in place, so there's certain things you can change, certain things you can't, so just be a bit careful, because we talked about the playparks for example, and a few other bits to the shop units, they're not being revisited here, so we can't revisit them as part of the application. Whilst there may be concern, we can't think about that unfortunately. I will go back to the agent regard, if it is deferred, with regards to the issues raised about social affordable housing, putting it together. The housing department does like it in one location, manages it better, but I understand the arguments you put forward as well, so I'll report those back. The start time that was raised is an unfortunate issue we're aware of, wheel washing's easier, you can put a condition on if you need to. The landscaping is still a condition that's not been actually discharged yet as part of the scheme, so it's relatively easy I think to sort that out with regards to trees not in the shadow of other trees, so we can sort that, if it is deferred, before the next planning committee, and the issue of replacing mature trees as well. Then coming on to two more tricky elements, with regards to design, I also understand some of the comments raised about design, we lost it on appeal on design before, and in my view, these designs are better than the previous one we lost appeal on, so I think we'll be careful in terms of the elements, I'll report that back, but I think we'll be careful that we did lose the design of the site before on appeal. And another thing in regards to the flooding condition, watertight, I take the point entirely, but they are, the condition does say about a flood assessment being submitted, which shows DA, and they were happy in the past with it. Any further development will have a flood assessment submitted, we'll have to DA, in collaboration, us to make sure it's okay, so I do think that point is already covered anyway, but I take the point on board. That's all, thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Pringle.
With regards to the site, what's happened there is, which is what's causing the flooding is... Uh, with regards to the 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 site, what's what's happened there is, which is what's causing the flooding is uh every piece of topsoil has been removed. So what they're doing is they're building on clay. Now, clay is very good at absorbing water, but it only absorbs a certain amount of water, and then what happens is all the rest just runs off. And that's the big problem that with the whole site is that they, every bit of topsoil was removed. And it's just the houses are built on clay. So that's that's the issue and that's that's what needs to be looked at. And it's okay saying, you know, the calculations demonstrate and that sort of thing. But you just have to look, look at Google and it'll tell you what clay does, just as I said. It absorbs water. When it's when it's saturated, all the water runs out and it ends up in Trow Park Drive. So that's that's what needs to be looked at. Sorry to keep on about it, but it's it really needs to be sorted.
Okay, thank you. And certainly, um, the restoration of topsoil and topsoil can be part of a landscaping condition as well. So I think we do have the powers there, but um I'll I'll make sure that that is discussed further with all the relevant authorities and the applicants. Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to raise anything? Well, if not, we've had a motion to suggest that this is deferred. Uh, that's been seconded. Can I say all those in favour? Okay, so that is, I think, unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, fairly confident that that will be coming back to us again in uh in due course. So we move on then to item five point two. This is land between Ellis Grove and Wilmore Lane and uh in Beeston, construct four-storey building to accommodate retirement apartments, including communal communal facilities, access, car parking and landscaping. Pardon me. Uh, Mr Dawson, we'd like to introduce this, page fifty three.
Thank you, Chair. Right, yeah, there's no late items on this particular um application. Uh, the principal development on this wider brownfield site has already been established with approval of several previous permissions. Um, the application seeks permission for a four-storey building to accommodate um apartments, including community facilities, means of access, car parking, landscaping. Um, the front of the site is approved for a care home, uh back site already, um sorry. This is the front of the site and approval care home is already to the rear. Main issues are high rates, section one six payments and immunity. Um, with the four-storey building, fifty-one apartments in total, mixed with one or two beds, nineteen car nineteen car parking spaces, the NCC recognises the site is a very sustainable location, given its proximity to the bus and tram facilities and the Beeston Town Centre. They think it's adequate and comparable to similar establishments throughout the country. Um, and a content with regards to the section one six, um five hundred and fifty-eight thousand is what the planning policies currently say. Um, this this suggestion was contested by applicant um suggesting over one hundred and sixty-five. Furthermore, we've come back and now for expediency, they've agreed to pay two hundred and thirty following the submission of a viability assessment which is outlined in the report. If members do wish to approve it, if we get that far, we do have to suggest what the two hundred and thirty thousand is used for, please. Um, with regards to amenity, there's good separation distances from the shops on the upper floors of properties to the northwest and the opposite side of Chilwell Road. Minimum distance twenty-seven metres between the relevation and the northeast Ellis Grove. Um, we think access of Wilmore Lane as proposed is a better option than Ellis Grove. Fairly happy, recommending approval subject to section one six. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We do have a public speaker on this, so do we have Stuart Goodwell? Oh, you're in place already. Thank you very much, Mr Goodwell. Um, so there's a microphone in front of you. Press the right button. Hopefully, a red light will come on. That's brilliant. Thank you. So so the floor is yours. You have three minutes and I'll give you a prompt about thirty seconds from the end.
Ladies and gentlemen, members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We've worked closely with officers, consultees and the community throughout this application. I'm pleased it is before you with a recommendation for approval. The government identifies the delivery of older persons' housing as critical and the proposed development offers a high-quality scheme for older people on a sustainable brownfield site. Brockstow's housing needs assessment identifies a current shortfall of seven hundred and fourteen private leased old retirement dwellings with the figure set to increase to over a thousand dwellings without further delivery. The National Planning Policy Guidance advises local authorities to take a positive approach to schemes such as this where there is an unmet need. The principle of residential development on this site has been established with the ex-stand consent for the care home and thirty supported living units. The site is also identified as a housing commitment in the local plan part two and complies with policy fourteen. The scheme will deliver economic benefits with the provision of direct and indirect jobs. There will be an increase in local spending on the High Street with the majority of residents being daily basket shoppers. It had been estimated that retirement housing delivers fiscal savings to the NHS of three and a half thousand pounds per person per annum. This is because the accommodation has been specifically designed to be safe and accessible for people as they age. There is a level access throughout, reducing the risk of falls in a lodge manager and a twenty-four-hour care line to give assistance when needed. The proposal will provide the opportunity for residents to downsize, freeing up larger, often unoccupied family homes elsewhere in the local housing market area. There are significant social benefits. There is a large communal lounge and coffee bowl which is highly valued social space. It is often used for coffee mornings, film nights, bridge clubs, fish and chip suppers. These reduce the risk of loneliness and social isolation. The proposed scheme is for a high-quality contemporary design, including a recessed fourth floor to fit with the recent modern developments on this part of Chilwell Road. The proposed height, scale and massing is significantly reduced from the ex-stand consent and is set further away from the properties on Ellis Grove. The nature of retirement living developments with a large areas of communal space and slower sales rates makes it difficult to deliver full affordable housing targets. Nevertheless, an independent assessment has been carried out, concluding that the scheme can provide two hundred and thirty thousand towards affordable housing and open space. We will provide this full amount and it should be noted that the ex-stand consent provides no affordable housing. The typical purchaser is a seventy-eight-year-old widow, often moving in following a significant life event such as the fall or death of her partner. It is typically a needs-based move with their existing property no longer being suitable. The nature of residents, together with the unsustainable location reflecting lower levels of car ownership and use, provided uh provided with our parking survey evidence of similar schemes, the Highway Authority consider the proposed level of parking acceptable. In conclusion, the proposed scheme offers significant benefits to future residents as well as the local community. And accordingly, I commend your officer's recommendation to members.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If you'd like to uh to take your seat again. Okay, well, the recommendation is to grant planning permission, so I shall move that recommendation.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you, and I shall open this up for any comments, questions or debates. Councillor Hallam.
Thanks, Chair. I'm very concerned and frankly upset about the substantial reduction in the section one oh six contributions for this application. Um, we've been told many times, and I um and I and I do believe that the all of the asks on the section one oh six are formulaic and contained within um planning legislation. Um, they should therefore be predictable. And I don't see why the local community, both the new community that we that will be moving in and the existing community should um suck up the costs in terms of less than adequate provision to to, in this case, um the the NHS to uh local immunity, parks and spaces, affordable housing, yada yada. Why should that be sucked up um on the basis of what I think is just simply not calculating the costs of the development, specifically the section one oh six, in advance? Now, if a developer were to do that in terms of the bricks and mortar, then I don't think they'd be going to Jusons and saying, well, we've got an independent somebody to write an assessment that says, we really can't afford the bricks and mortar, but we want you to give, we want, you know, we want them anyway. I don't think that would wash. So what is any different about what we and other authorities are asking for in terms of section one oh six? Um, it which is a real shame because other than that, I would be very minded to support this application because I think in all other ways it's spectacular. Um, but it's not our fault that these costs weren't calculated and I don't see why we should suck it up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councillor Owen.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'm I'm pleased to hear that councillor Hallam is taking the issue of section one oh six contributions more seriously than appears to have been ta- been taken in the past because this is something uh we have been on about for a long, long time now. But of course, Brockstow has a long and I don't think very proud history of waiving significant amounts of section one oh six monies in terms of infrastructure. Uh, but I won't say any more on that because my main concern here is that this is an over-intensification of development uh on the site. As I read it, there are fifty-one units proposed and there are nineteen parking spaces proposed. And I look at the top of page fifty-six and the justification for having so few parking spaces is that it's a very sustainable location. Now, isn't that an overused word, sustainable? And when we drill down into what sustainable means is that there's a bus stop nearby and there's a tram nearby. And not only that, uh you've got easy walking and cycling distances to Beeston Town Centre. Now, I thought this was a complex, we call it retired living now, elderly persons. So are we seriously expecting geriatrics like me to get on their bike and cycle into the centre of Beeston or Chilwell? You know, that is really quite ridiculous to suggest that that is a justification for so few parking spaces. And it's a bit of an insult to uh the more mature in society these days that are going to live, or would like to live in these sort of developments to suggest that they're not capable or shouldn't have a car. I know even with the council's own retirement living complexes that parking is or lack of parking is an issue. Many years, I know councillor Mrs Owen was campaigning to get additional parking at the spinny in her ward and eventually got some extra parking. And I've heard other members say that there are parking issues at our retirement living complexes. Now, there's an excuse for that because they were built thirty and forty years ago before car ownership was as prevalent as it is now. But when we know that there is going to be an issue, not to take account of that particular issue is to me a nonsense and to suggest that there is parking, additionally, parking is controlled within the vicinity. I'm not sure what is meant by that, uh whether they mean traffic regulation orders so that you can't park anyway or there are paid-to-park car parks. Well, you don't, you don't want to have to be constantly paying to park your car in a car park. So I'm afraid that is not a satisfactory and acceptable state of affairs. So I am not minded to support the application tonight because I think it's an over-intensification of of development and I think there is totally inadequate parking in the light of today's experience that we have with retirement living complexes. And so, as I say, I shall vote against it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, I I will just say that my grandfather used to cycle to visit us uh over the top of the North Yorkshire Moors well into his seventies. Uh, when he got to nearly eighty, we did persuade him to stop, but uh um uh on behalf of uh um a huge community of older cyclists, I think they would be um upset to be dismissed as not uh uh as not realistic. Anybody else want to raise anything? No, well, it seems to me that um, yeah, I understand what uh councillor Hallam and indeed councillor Owen have said about the um uh the section one oh six uh provision. But we've had our own independent assessment carried out and our independent assessment says that this site can afford to generate two hundred and thirty thousand pounds and that is what is uh being offered. Um, I I think if we went to a planning appeal on the basis that um we want more than our own people say can be afforded, uh then we would look very, very silly uh indeed. And um it is frustrating that we have policies that cannot be implemented in full over section one oh six uh contributions, but we have to be realistic. Um, we do want to get uh units developed, places built. And um there is no point effectively pricing ourselves out of the market by saying we require you to pay an amount that our own experts say cannot be afforded. And so it it seems to me that the um uh the the section one oh six amount being offered here is the appropriate amount because it's what our own uh um assessment has said. And therefore, I would support the application in regard to that. In regard to parking, there are a number of similar sites to this around the borough. There are many, many hundreds around the country of developments like this. And it is quite notable that a large number of the occupants do not have cars, that they've moved away uh from that and the facilities are arranged to ensure that they don't need uh cars. Um, again, I think of uh where my granddad lived and that had eighty uh units within it and I think there were twelve parking spaces. And yes, I got parked there every time I went to visit it because there simply wasn't the uh the demand for parking uh there. Um, it is right that some developments were built before the dependency on the car became as great as they are now, but uh one of the huge steps that we need to take in in terms of sustainable living is to make sure that we move away from the dependency uh on the car. Uh, and this seems to be a perfectly suited uh location, a perfectly sensible location to uh to do that. So I can see, I have to say, no reason to vote against this uh uh application. I think we're getting uh the maximum amount that we could expect in a section one oh six uh and therefore I'm very happy to support it. Okay, anybody else want to say anything? Uh, councillor Pringle.
In Trow, we have uh Church Close, which is a Brockstow operated old people's homes. There are twenty-one of them and there are six parking spaces and the residents fight each other daily to park cars. So pa- car parking is a big issue. And I don't, but we we seem to, you know, two years into this planning committee, member of this planning committee, I think probably three applications in each meeting talk about parking. And we just don't seem to do anything about it. We just seem to accept that either um it's 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 good enough or we just sort of gloss over it as we seem to be doing here. Parking is is a an issue and, you know, it's, we should do something about it. And really, the number of spaces that are here for the number of units that are being built. And okay, yes, the the, as we see from the pictures, the tram stops just outside and and there is a bus service, but some old people still like their independence. They don't, they don't want to to sort of close themselves into a multi-unit place like this and not have the freedom to uh to get into their car if they wish to, to go somewhere else. And you could say, well, okay, they could get onto the tram, go to the railway station and go to the rail somewhere. But people, again, don't want to do that sort of thing. They they want their independence. And I think what we're doing here is actually clamping down on our independence. So uh as it stands, I can't support it. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Uh, councillor Marshall.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I support the position that councillor Watts has articulated just previous to this, and there is a a situation of it sounds like personal interest driving decisions here. So councillor Pringle, for instance, is rightly rightly concerned about flooding issues, but clearly doesn't want to also bring into the concept on the previous application that it was, we've had the wettest period and climate is involved in that issue. We had the wettest period, seventh wettest period since two thousand and nineteen. And that is clearly an impact of climate change. We have an opportunity here to address some of the most underlying causes of climate change and we have to be brave as an authority when we're making decisions about planning and move away from the default position on the reliance of the car as the primary mode of transport. There is not, I don't think, a more connected place in terms of sustainable public transport than the site we are talking about in the whole of Brockstow. I know that because it's at the bottom of my road and it's in my ward. There is a world-class tram system. I think a national-winning bus system with cycle routes. I think a national winning bus system with cycle routes and close provision, both in terms of walking to other, other locations as well. And the primary driver shouldn't be an expectation that residents of a retirement community should be having a reliance on the car. It will be a life choice for residents of that home when they are talking about or looking at moving there. The impact on residents is an important issue, but there is. Very well controlled parking within the vicinity around Ellis Grove, around Imperial Road, on the high road itself at Chilwell, and on Park Road and Grove, the neighbouring streets. And in that sense, I don't think there will be an adverse negative impact from the provision that is set out and indeed the weight of, of car use that will be there. In that sense, we should be supporting this type of development on a piece of land which has been redundant for a long time. And this is a good, attractive development to meet the needs of the community that we have. Now, Mr Dawson, at his outset, said, we almost, if we want to support this application, we should also be considering how section one oh one is, section one oh six monies are attributed. I would like to include in that discussion and that consideration, the Western Community Centre open space just at the back of, just at the back of the proposed development of Barrydale, towards there. So that should be included as a, an area for consideration of one oh six monies because they do offer significant resources as well for elderly people within the community as well. So I would request that that is included as well. But I'll be supporting this application. It isn't perfect when it comes to other shortfalls in one oh six monies, we recognise that. But I will be supporting the overall benefits that this will be bringing to the community.
Thank you very much. Councillor Robinson.
Chair, thank you. I do support this proposal. I don't want to get into the point that councillor Hallam made about section one oh six because he made them very forcefully. And I think that there's some good things there that we can take and certainly use for benchmarks in the future. However, I think on the other point, I think we do need to remember that this is not about the inalienable right to own a car. This is about building houses and about giving people longer term security, and particularly for older people. There is no inalienable right to have a car. They can have a choice. If they don't want to move to this area that has limited car parking spaces, they don't have to do there. But we've got, but we have a right, we have a right to encourage people to use public transport, to make the most of it. And I think, as you said, Chair, to write people off who are sixty, seventy and older and say that then, that they might not want to use public transport, that they may not want to use their bikes. These are the way, these are the things that we actually need to be encouraging for all sorts of purposes. So I will fully support this, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Anyone else? No, Mr Dawson, anything you'd like to pick up on? Thank you very much. Well, it's been moved and seconded. Can I see all those in favour of granting planning permission, please? One, two, three, four, five, six. And those against? One, two, three, four, five. That how you made it, six, five? Yes, so planning permission is granted. Thank you very much. Yes, indeed, that's a very valid point. We have two hundred and thirty thousand pound then of section one oh six monies. The options for this, I guess, are that we do it pro rata or we can choose where to allocate money to. Mr Dawson, any thoughts on this?
Not really, thank you, Chair. If you look at the end of paragraph six point three point two, it just outlines that it's enhancement of public open space, which would be what councillor Marshall said to, whether it goes towards some of the local infrastructure in terms of the health practices or towards affordable housing, or as I said, one or combination of these. So if you want to split it equally between those three things, that's fine. If you want to suggest there's more need for health versus open space for affordable housing, that's up to members as well. I appreciate that's not much of a steer, I'm afraid, I'm sorry, but that's the position we have unfortunately.
Right, I've got two hands. I took councillor Marshall and then councillor Hallam.
Is that decision, decision fixed from this committee? The proportions or can it be discussed and then somehow agreed?
Quick remark here, Bryony, but I think it'll be fixed. Because I think if we had to change it, we'd have to come back. So quick remark here, but I think it's, it's the main decision to make.
It just feels like a bit more consideration needs to be given to the, the need, I guess is what I'm saying. And if, I don't know, somewhere by agreement, there can be some discussion of need around there, then that's the only, that's the only point I'm making.
Councillor Hallam wanted to come in.
Thanks, Chair. Just, just as a point of note from last time, you didn't ask for abstentions. The reason the numbers for the purpose of democratic services didn't, didn't add up was because I abstained, given the basis of the pros and cons of the application. Given my umbrage with the, with the section one oh six, it basically seems to me that nobody's going to get what they ask for unless you leave other people out. So I think the most sensible suggestion is that everybody suffers equally in a pro rata basis. To do anything other than that would be, would be declining the, you know, potentially denying the viability of what people have already asked for.
Okay, councillor Jackson.
Can we not somehow refer this to councillor Hallam's committee for consideration? If I'm going to make a decision how we're splitting two hundred and thirty thousand pounds, it wants to be done on, on the basis of need. As far as I know, local open space is good quality in the vicinity. I might be wrong. But I'd like to see a proper report with facts in it for consideration, how we're spending, getting on for quarter million pounds of money. We all know there's a problem in affordable housing. I'd like to see numbers of people on waiting lists within, you know, a mile or two of this site. I'd also like to see what's needed for public transport improvements in the area if we're going to balance this. I don't want to be chucking, you know, a third of it at open space if it's not needed at the cost of one or two units of affordable housing. It seems quite ridiculous to me.
Okay, can we do that, Bryony?
I'd suggest maybe deferring the decision in relation to the section one oh six contributions until a later meeting. Any decision that's made now will be the, the final decision in relation to the contributions.
Right, so can we grant planning permission but defer that one item?
Yeah.
In which case I think that would be, that's what I'm thinking is the wish of the members, councillor Marshall.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can agree two hundred and thirty thousand, can't we? And, and then just defer the way it's, it's split. Yep.
Right, well, if everyone's happy to do that, then I'll propose that we defer the decision on the splitting of the section one oh six or the allocation of the section one oh six money to a future meeting.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody want to say anything on that? In which case, sorry, Mr Dawson.
Just, just I'll check with Democratic Services tomorrow whether it can come, should come out to this committee or Jobs and Economy Committee. But either way, as the granting planning permission is subject to section one oh six anyway, we do have time to find out, needs assessment, et cetera, as per councillor Jackson's request, so I shall update accordingly.
Right, yeah, thank you very much. Okay, can I see then all those in favour of deferring that one part of the decision? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? No, that is carried unanimously. Right, thank you very much. Okay, we move on then to a, item five point three, which is not quite next door, but very, very close to the, the last application. This is an application to construct a three-storey building comprised in nine student apartments. This is on Ellis Grove again. Members may recall that this application or an earlier version of this application came to the committee in September. We refused it then partly on the grounds of parking. And that has now been revised and so there's an amended application that's come back. Mr Dawson, would you like to introduce this?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. You've largely covered most of it, I think. Revised scheme that's come to committee in September, which was refused on parking grounds. This is developing an existing warehouse site which would be replaced. And as we've just discussed in the other scheme, there's a sixth bed care home nearby and it's part of Myford site immediately adjacent, three apartments per floor. The principle's been established under the eighteen planning permission, which is eighteen five three eight, which is, this is two-bed scheme, a scale is not out keeping with the area. Due to separation distances and nearby uses, we don't believe mean-to is an issue. We are aware of the proposed development nearby, as we've been discussing, and happy with that. Main issue last time was parking. Previously there were five spaces, there's now fourteen. So, and there's no higher objections last time, but certainly following amended plans, they're quite happy with the increase in parking. We consider this more than efficient for the area, no other issues, recommend approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. There is no public speaking on this one, so I shall move the recommendation, which is grant planning permission.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you. And any comments, questions or observations? Councillor Hallam.
Thanks, Chair. I think it's a marked improvement, so much so that I'm definitely going to be supporting this application. I do think it's odd, the location of the, of the bin store has moved from next to the building where it would be useful to the people living there, to the other side of the car park right next to the street where people are going to be driving in and out. Now fourteen people as opposed to five people going to be driving in and out past people wanting to empty their bins and stuff. I think it's an odd decision, but not one that's so magnificent that I would be minded to, to change my vote. And just raise that as a, as a point of note. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I, I guess the explanation is probably it's easier to get them out onto the road from there, but yeah, I think it was a valid point. Anybody else? Councillor Marshall, were you indicating or was that just your pen twiggling? Councillor Walworth.
Thank you, Chairman. I received an email today lobbying on this application from a person called Ian Collier. And it, it appears to me he's neither for nor against the development. He's putting forward some suggestions or comments that ought to be taken account of. Can I, can I ask Mr Dawson, have you seen this email?
We did have one late item that I should have said at the start. I can't remember who it's from. Not Mr Collier, I don't think. But the one additional objection talked about five parking spaces being inadequate. So I'm considering that that person was not looking at the amended plans, seeing as we've got more than five parking spaces now. But that's all we've had today.
Well, I'm just a little bit surprised to get this then in that case. I've not been following this particular application in detail over time, but he's making some quite, in my opinion, I think useful suggestions. The first one is that in the previous application, there was the use of obscured glass to overcome overlooking. We know how delicate a subject overlooking is. And there was a clause in that, in the consideration of that application. And he said, I request that the existing condition thirteen be carried forward from the already approved planning permission for the site. So I'm, I'm surprised that the planning department haven't sort of taken this into account when they've been preparing the script on this particular issue now, tonight. Doesn't seem to have been done very thoroughly to me, if that's a sensible suggestion. And it does seem to be sensible as far as I can, while I can read it without knowing all the background to it. This, this man appears to live on Barrydale Avenue, which is quite near the site. So, you know, I'm, I'm a bit disappointed that things like this aren't taken, taken into account before it even comes to us. The other suggestion he puts forward is about the management of the site by the Raven Group. Now, if what he's saying here is true, and again, we've only got his word for it, he says Raven Group appear to be electrical contractors with no experience of managing residential accommodation, let alone student accommodation. And we know that student accommodation does have problems which doesn't occur with normal residential accommodation. I mean, I've got grandchildren who have been students and I hear the stories and things that go on about student behaviour and things like that. So I've got practical knowledge in that direction and I've had to underwrite guarantees for my grandchildren with landlords and things like that. And I've had to look into the details of that kind of thing. So if this company, Raven Group, have got no clue, which is what he's alleging, on how you manage a block of students with great potential for antisocial behaviour, unfortunately. And have our, have our planning department, as such, examined the credentials of the Raven Group and they're going to be the managing, or are Raven Group going to subcontract the managing of this, these premises to another group? Or is their whole intention to, to get this thing planned, planning through planning and then sell it on as an investment? But it seems to me that it's all a bit premature. And again, I would thought that's something that ought to have been looked in by our officers and that's what we pay our officers for. Sorry to be critical.
No, that, that's fine, thanks very much. Obviously I asked Mr Dawson to come back at the end, but I received that email as well. But I don't think we can criticise the officers for not dealing with an email when it wasn't actually sent to them. It was sent to the members of the committee today. However, if you look at page eighty-three and paragraph fourteen, or condition fourteen, the windows of the southwest elevation at first and second floor shall be obscurely grazed, glazed, glazed to Pilkington level four or five or equivalent and non-opening. And so that actually deals with the issue of overlooking an amenity. There is the glazed windows within there. The, the other one about the management of the site, it's a fairly well-established principle of planning law that the applicant is not, that the identity of the applicant is not a planning ground. So I don't think we could lawfully refuse permission just because the Raven Group haven't got experience of, of running a site. And that applies whether it's an individual wanting to build someone, something who we think is dodgy or a company. We have to look purely at the merits of the application, not of the applicant. So whilst I, I understand the concerns that were raised in that, I don't think actually planning, we can address that particular one. Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to come in? No, if not, ask Mr Dawson to respond to anything.
Yeah, just on, and thank you to Sue for pointing out to me. In the bottom of page seventy-four, object request, condition respect to partials to glazing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, was a summary of that, of that email. And on page seventy-seven, the paragraph, top page, part went down, quest is made by developer of the care home to condition that the window south elevation of your school is glazed, et cetera, et cetera. So those points have been covered, both the email and the amenity assessment. And as you referred to, it's in a condition as well. So I'm comfortable that we've actually addressed that prior to email I received today. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? If not, it's been moved and seconded. Can I see all those in favour, please? And I think that is unanimous. Any against? Any abstentions? No, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. So move on then to application five point four. This is the forge at Trow. This is an application to build one new development. The recommendation here is actually to refuse planning permission. So I'll ask Mr Dawson to introduce that. And then we have a public speaker, Mr Haynes. So Mr Haynes, if you want to move to the seat to get ready, that's great. Thank you very much. Mr Dawson, we'd like to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. It'll be nice to get through a committee without anything on greenbelt, but never mind. There's a new dwelling and associated acoustic fencing. There's a reasonable history on this site and we have had to stop a refusal on greenbelt grounds. We don't consider this, based on the sort of national planning framework definition, to be an infill or replacement dwelling. And therefore with no VSE, we recommend refusal based on the greenbelt policy grounds. We are happy with the scale and design of the dwelling, but we don't believe there's sufficient amenity space either. And therefore we're suggesting refusal on those grounds as well. So unfortunately, from our point of view, we think it fails on two grounds, recommend refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now that presumably wasn't Mr Hayes, then he just walked out. You're Mr Hayes. Thank you. We'd like to take the seats, sir. If you can press the button on the right of that light, so the floor is yours and that's with the previous application. I'll give you a prompt about thirty seconds from the end. Right, yeah. Okay, over to you.
Mr Chairman, officers and members.
Mister Chairman, officers and members of the committee, I am currently residing at my mother's home in Ilkiston, following my company's insolvency and the breakdown of my marriage. I am therefore seeking to build my, myself a two-bed bungalow on land I own at the Forge Trowell as a retirement home for myself and partner. Although technically the site is greenbelt, it is not a greenfield and hasn't been out for over 50 years. As no SS1 status, the forge is covered by a CLU for the storage, management and maintenance of vintage industrial machinery relating to farming, which is a family tradition that began with my father, to which now I wish to continue. The site is 1,087 square metres and was originally carving sheds, which my father began leasing in 1975. British Rail applied to develop the site in 1982, which was refused. In lieu of payment of debt owing, a further application was made for an housing on this site, but that was also refused. The forge was, was finally purchased by my father in 1997, and we have continually utilised this land for the, uh, for mentioned use. Because of the continued attempt to try to break in, a two-metre fence and, and, uh, was erected along with steel gates and other security purposes. I therefore am seeking the permission via the committee to be allowed to develop myself a family home for the following reasons. The site is surrounded by security fencing and has never been a greenfield site or accessible to the public for as long as I can remember, well over 50 years. Although classified as greenbelt, I consider it to be the same situation as toton sidings, which is also mostly in greenbelt, and that the council greenbelt allocation is both unfair applied, unfairly applied, and demonstrates a rigid flexibility which is uns- unsustainable. The government is positively encouraging self-builds in su- in suitable locations, and I feel the forge is a prime example of a suitable location. Therefore, I hope the committee will receive my comments positively and allow me the chance to build myself a property to retire and continue my family tradition of keeping vintage industrial agricultural machinery well managed and maintained while I still live on the site. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to express my views, for your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll keep you, I'd like to take your, uh, your seat again. Okay. Well, the, the recommendation is to, uh, refuse planning permission, so I shall move the recommendation.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Pringle, is your ward, do you want to go first?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, as, as the applicant has described, the, uh, the site has been there for a good number of years, and, uh, basically, uh, it can't be viewed really from the, from the main road because of the fence that's surrounding it, and, uh, the, the applicant's proposal to, uh, to build a house on it, um, will in actual fact tidy up the site a little bit, because half of the existing black fence that you see on that photograph in front of us there is going to disappear and be replaced by some nicer-looking wooden, uh, sound-deadening fencing, which will actually improve the area quite considerably. It has to be sound-deadened because the railway line is particularly close to it as well. But, uh, as a, as a ward councillor and also as a, speaking on behalf of trial parish councillor, I guess, every and trial parish councillor accepted it, and, uh, it's just this issue again that we have in both, not so much trial, but in Cossel and Orsworth, lots of sites are in the greenbelt, but as the applicant's just said, that's really never been, the bit we're talking about, it's never actually been in the greenbelt as such, because it's been surrounded by that fence for many years. So, we're not developing in the greenbelt, we're developing within a, an area, fenced-off area, that sits surrounded by a greenbelt. So, um, I, I support this, this application. I think it's very similar to some of the ones we've done, talked about recently, and in, in Cossel in particular. It just seems that the officers have to, because it's in the greenbelt, have to, have to say no. And we as a committee, uh, you know, just recently have looked at these sort of applications with, uh, with a sort of, uh, a view that, yes, it is greenbelt, and that's what the officers have to do, but common sense says that what we should do is, is, uh, allow it to happen. So that's what I shall be doing. I'll be voting for it to happen.
Thank you very much. Now, the second, uh, ward councillor is councillor Ball. So over to you, councillor Ball.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I would like to say that I always sort of think, oh, it's in greenbelt, and, and I am very conscious of, of that fact. But as Don's already said, it's like the ones we've had in Cossel, um, there are places where I, I do feel that if this was built and given permission, it's not going to be detrimental to the greenbelt. It will be in, in, in that area that's, I suppose, really you could say is tucked away, and, um, and I just think that it's, someone can build a house and they can actually live there, and, uh, and, and improve the area. Um, I mean, if, if this application came along and he wanted to build it further down where it is at open green, I mean, I, I would have to think twice about that. But I, I do feel that, uh, there are times when we can look at it in a sympathetic manner, and, uh, I, I do feel that, uh, I'm not going to support this as a refusal. I would like to see that area built on and and the family be able to live there. I think that would be much better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Marshall?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I have a sympathy with this, um, application as well, and what councillor Pringle and Ball have said. Um, I think if you had to dr- y- you know, list most unlikely sites in a greenbelt, this would probably be in the top 10 of sites which don't look like they belong in a greenbelt at all. And in that sense, we have a responsibility and the dispensation at this committee to make, um, practical and exceptional decisions. I think this falls exactly into that type of category and wouldn't be, in that sense, detrimental to, to what we perhaps perceive as the environmental signs of the greenbelt, so I'll be supporting this application as well.
Thank you very much. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I also support this for some of the reasons, um, that Lydia and other people have said. My only regret is, is that we didn't use these common sense arguments, some very similar ones, on a matter that was not too dissimilar in Bvington Village last year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I wasn't here for that application, so, uh, I, I couldn't possibly comment on it. Uh, councillor Hallam?
Thanks. I'm going to be, uh, I'm going to be, it, it looks like the token bad guy, um, because I don't support this application. Um, the, I'm, I'm sorry to hear, Chair, of the, uh, personal circumstances, uh, leading to this, of the applicant. But I think people are confusing greenfield and greenbelt. Greenbelt is a ring around an urban area in order to prevent sprawl and growth, and, um, and areas like, for example, between Nottingham and Derby, from, uh, from merging into, uh, into one supercity. And while we, you know, we acknowledge that the greenbelt is useful, it's predominantly agricultural. Um, this whole area, if you were to take it back before, you know, while, while humans were still living in caves, it would have all been forest, not farmland. Um, so, really, you know, we accept that the greenbelt is, um, useful to us, um, and from the rest of greenbelt, no. It's not, if it's not residential, and the reason I objected to Bvington are the same reasons. If it's an agricultural building, all well and good, that's got its place in the greenbelt. If you're trying to take an agricultural building and turn it into a residential building, that is contributing to urban sprawl, which is exactly why the greenbelt exists, to prevent that. So I'm sorry to say that in this situation, I can't, I can support the recommendation, I can't support the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I know councillor Ball's itching to get back in. Um, councillor Ball? Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I, I, I do find myself actually here, um, having to assure councillor Hallam that he's not the only bad guy. Um, I have a lot of sympathy with, with the applicant, but I'm afraid when I apply my lawyer's mind to this, uh, I just can't not agree with the recommendation. Um, as we said in the last application, the, the character of the, um, applicant is not a planning issue, uh, and therefore not something that we can, uh, take into account. Um, so what we're left to find is, are there very special circumstances? If this was a development outside of the greenbelt, I would be, I, I would have very few problems with it, but, uh, as it's in the greenbelt, um, using the phrase that was popular in the 60s, it's nibbling at it. Uh, and, um, for the reasons that, uh, councillor Hallam said, that's of itself a bad thing. Development in the greenbelt is viewed as being harmful unless it's, uh, one of various categories of permitted development. Uh, and therefore there has to be very special circumstances to, um, override that. I just can't see them here. Um, I, I, I would love to, but I can't, uh, and, and so I can't support, um, uh, uh, an application to build on this site, or this application to build on, on this site. Um, I suspect the numbers are going to go the other way in any case, um, but I, I'm afraid I can't support it. Uh, councillor Prindle?
Uh, for the benefit of councillor Hallam and yourself, Chair, uh, the, the name of the site actually indicates the, the history. Uh, that used to be, years ago, a forge, the whole, the whole field that we're looking at, um, coming back down this track, which is a footpath, actually. Um, just the other side of that oak there, there was a forge, and it was a, it was a little, uh, forge with a hamlet. There was about 15 or 16 houses on it. The reason I know that is because when it was, uh, put forward as a proposal for pods, if you remember, I nearly fell down one of the foundations of, of the houses when I walked on the side. So that, talking about it being a greenbelt is, it's something that's, and again, it's a bit like trial garden centre to a certain extent as well. Is trial garden centre is a quarry, which was a quarry for years, had a fence put round it to develop as a, as a, a garden centre, and then the greenbelt was, was enveloped it. And that's what's happened here, because the building we see down from the development, that used to be Trowell Railway Station. So that's, again, is another reason why that particular area, yes, it is in the greenbelt, but it has a sort of a heritage, an industrial heritage, so that's the personal, that's the reason I would say that we have to, uh, sort of turn down the, uh, the officer's decision, because basically what's happening is, is we've got a piece of land, as the applicant said, has been used by his family for 50 years, and it does need a little bit tidying up. And if this, uh, house is built there, that will tidy it up. That's 50% of it's going to be tidied up, and it's going to make it mu- look much, much better. So I think we've just got to sort of look at-